Good evening, everyone. Just let some of the basketball girls, basketball team come inside. Have a seat. Have a seat, ladies.
Don't be scared.
Yeah. Tuckahoe. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 7th Village Board of Trustees meeting. Can we please all stand for the pledge?
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Trustee Howell.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Trustee Cronin.
Present.
Mayor Andino.
Present. And today, we have two appointments that we will make, and then I think I will present a certificate to the girls varsity basketball team. So, I'd just like a motion for appointment of Zakena Smith to the Assessment Review Board with a term to expire September 30th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Also, may I have a motion for the appointment of Andy Wren to the Assessment Review Board with a term to expire September 30th, 2027.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so before we move on to presentations, I would like to first and foremost congratulate the Tuckahoe Girls Varsity Basketball Team on their win, the Section 1 Class C Championship. Congratulations, ladies. So, for those who don't know, this is the first time that the team has won this championship, so this is exciting. I saw this on Facebook, and I said, "We have to do something." And I just want to let you guys know that Tuckahoe's son and Harlem Globetrotter, Max Pierce, hoped he would be here, but he's away with the Harlem Globetrotters, so we will be doing something at the school. I'll be contacting you guys to come and present something with him there. He is extremely proud of you guys. He called me today. So, he just said he wanted to let you guys know that he is proud, and congratulations as well. Before I ask for a few representatives to come forward, I want to read the team members' names. And please forgive me if I mix up anyone's name. So, Sophia Colasacco, if you're here, please stand. And Wade, if we can put the camera on the girls, that would be great. Irene Maris. Catherine DeAngelis. Cara Doherty. Avery Garcia. Lila Gargiulo? Gargiulo? Sorry. Sophia Doherty. Grace Kern. Angelina Mazuokolo. I think I got it right. Lucy Machido. Adriana Rocco. Isabella Basani. Olivia Monjone. And Kai Rogers. Kai Rogers. So, and I have to give kudos to head coach Andrew Colaswano. Said it right? And the assistant coach, Alex Bonci. I'm just so excited for you guys, Bonci. So, may I have a few representatives and the coaches come forward? I would like to present with you with a certificate.
Girls, on behalf of the entire board and the village of Tuckahoe, we want to present these congratulations. We want to acknowledge the championship. Thank you.
Good e-
What's going on?
We need a mic that works.
Does-
Sorry, Andy.
Okay. First, just want to thank the mayor and the village board for honoring this great group of girls tonight. You know, it's such a great feeling to know that we've brought Tuckahoe its first girls' basketball championship and section title in school history.
Woo-hoo!
It was brought to my attention, we also achieved the most wins in school history as a team, so it's another moment to be proud of. So, overall, the response from the village and the town has just been overwhelming. You know, the texts, the calls have just been amazing, and everyone's been so supportive. I cannot tell the girls how proud Coach Bonci and I are of our athletes, many of whom I've coached for five to six years now. And, you know, we do have a quick turnaround, so they're gonna go home and get some rest. We do play tomorrow up at Yorktown High School at 4:00 against Millbrook in the subregional round of the state tournament. So, you know, right now, we hope maybe we'll be back here in a few weeks with a state title. Let's see.
Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Thank you. So, I think you can all go ahead and go get your rest now? If you'd like to leave before we continue?
Yeah.
Okay. Bye, guys. Very cool. I don't know about you guys, but I can't stop smiling. I understand that we have our state senator Shelley Mayer on. So, if Shelley, if you would like to speak now, you're welcome to.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'm happy to speak now, but I really can't compare with the Tuckahoe Girls.
It's true.
Fantastic that I got to see them. Congratulations, and I'm really thrilled about that. But I'll be very brief. Trustee Cronin asked me to speak briefly about something that really was very important to our local governments throughout my district and certainly the village of Tuckahoe, which was a proposal both in a legislative form by Senator Hark, my colleague from Northern Westchester, but really more importantly by Governor Hopel in her executive budget, which would have mandated that municipalities allow what's called accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, in every community. And what it said, and why it was really opposed so strongly by municipal governments throughout New York, is that there was an affirmative obligation on behalf of every municipality, and it would have been the village of Tuckahoe and the town of Eastchester, to adopt a local law that authorized these accessory dwelling units in all areas zoned for single-family or multifamily residential use in all lots within existing residential use. So, that means that every home, if they applied, would be entitled to have an accessory dwelling unit, like space in there, maybe in the garage, once it met zoning code requirements for a habitable place, or a separate little building on their lot. But there was nothing you could do to stop it, even if you had local zoning, that would be overridden by this provision of law. And the reason for this originally was to expand and extend the amount of affordable housing, not only in the suburbs, but in the city of New York as well. But this was sort of a heavy-handed approach to dealing with the problem. And Tuckahoe has affordable housing, and Tuckahoe is a place that is welcoming of affordable housing. And therefore, you know, this idea of sort of one size fits all of adopting a law that required you to override local zoning codes was really opposed by municipal leaders throughout Westchester, Long Island, and many places in the city of New York. So, the other thing the governor had in her proposed budget was something called transit-oriented development, which would again have required that within a half-mile of any Metro North train station, you would have to allow 25 units of multifamily dwellings. So, in Tuckahoe, that'd be in the Tuckahoe or the Crestwood train station, to the extent it's in parts are adjacent to the village of Tuckahoe. And again, that would override local zoning law, again, to encourage the expansion of affordable units, which I think is something we all favor. But there's nothing in there to ensure these units are affordable. So, you could build 25 units, and they could be market rate and not affordable at all. Anyway, because of the pushback by members of the Conference of Mayors and all of the municipal officials, really statewide, very strenuously, the governor took this out of her proposed budget. So, in a big way, this is a win for municipal governments to be able to come up with ideas of how to expand affordable housing, which we know is a problem in the suburbs and elsewhere, but not do it in a way that really overrides all the local decision-making, doesn't reflect the individual decisions in a particular town, village, or city. And as I say, Tuckahoe, which does have rental housing, for example, and has municipal housing authority, shouldn't be compared to a place like Somers, maybe, where they have very little affordable housing and very little rental housing. So, there was pushback, and the governor heard that. She took this out of her proposed budget, so will not be in the final adopted budget, which we're currently right in the middle of working on. But it isn't to say that this issue doesn't go away. So, Senator Harkam's bill, which was the, really, the beginning of this movement, he said he's going to amend his bill, but nothing, I don't believe anything is gonna happen in this legislative session from now till the end of June. But I think it is a very important issue to consider, because the issue of affordable housing, rental housing, and how we're going to keep the suburbs, at least for me, affordable, is something we all have to struggle with. This, I think, was not the approach that was going to be most successful, because it created this precedent of overruling local zoning and your decision-making authority. But I do think that these issues of affordability and accessibility remain a challenge that we have to think of creatively. And I have spoken to George Latimer, who's trying to work with many communities to provide additional funding and incentives to create affordable housing, which is a smart way to go, and to use federal funds and state funds to encourage the creation of affordable housing. But because this is a hot topic among municipal governments and certainly among the Westchester municipal officials, I appreciated Trustee Cronin's invitation to come in and just brief you on it and say that it's no longer in the mix for the next 20 days until we resolve the budget here in Albany. And so, it's out of the short term, but we're gonna have to deal with it in the long term. And I'm happy to answer any questions, Mayor Andino or any of the trustees.
Anyone on the board have any questions?
Nope, not at this time.
Thank you very much, Senator Mayor, for coming and giving us an update on that.
And the other thing, Madam Mayor, is after the budget is done, and by the way, we're fighting for more municipal aid for all of our localities. We'll always be fighting for that. Hopefully, we'll get some. I'd love to come and brief the village on what was in the budget, both in terms of education, where you know I was on the Chair of Education, continuing to fight for all of our school districts, but all of the other issues, including transportation, state DOT, criminal justice issues, all the issues that may appear in the budget. I'm happy to come brief you, and thank you, Trustee Cronin, for inviting me again to do this little briefing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it is important for the residents to know that the village of Tuckahoe is a member of NICOM, the New York Conference of Mayors or municipal officials, and they are instrumental in advocating when these issues come up. You know, we get so much information from them, and we're, you know, they have so much education from municipal officers that we have to take, we ought to take advantage of. But they also advocate for us, and they're looking at the budget and other items with fine-toothed combs, with sometimes things that we could miss. So, I'm grateful that we are members there. That's, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it's really, it would be really great to have one of the legislators come back, because issues between the state and the local municipalities, as you can see, are very connected. So, it's really important, I think, for us to get a download of specifically how those things that were voted on in the state budget will impact us at the local level.
Absolutely. Happy to come back and go through those in detail. So, I anticipate with this governor, whom we have a, you know, a much more collegial relationship, will be done by March 31st, and thereafter, I'm happy to come to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Nice to see you.
You too. Okay, so next, we have some presentations. Ry Kessler can come forward to the mic. She wants to talk with us on ways to support the Humane Society.
Hi, I'm Ry Kessler, and I'm trying to raise money for the Humane Society. And I want to sell cookies at playgrounds to do this. I'd like to sell for a couple hours on weekends at-
Bring the mic down.
Hold the mic down. Hi, I'm Ry Kessler, and I'm trying to raise money for the Humane Society. I want to sell cookies at playgrounds to do this. I'd like to sell for a couple hours on weekends at Fisher Park and Circuit of Playground. I would do this during the spring and the early summer. And the cookies would be peanut and dairy-free, and also, they'd be homemade. The first time I would start with about 50 cookies is like kind of a trial run. And depending on how well the cookies sell, I'd make more or less cookies in subsequent events.
And Ry, could you tell everyone what you would use that money for?
I would, I would, I would use it to contribute to the Humane Society.
Okay.
Right. It was a, it was a, it was a suggestion, it was a suggested thing to do something like a lemonade stand or a bake sale, which, you know, selling cookies is in that kind of category. On the Bake Humane Society webpage.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Ry. This is wonderful to have young people come forward and want to help our communities. So, I am going to, unless you have anything else, I think what I'll-
Could we suggest the farmer's market? As an option, too?
Go ahead.
So, we have a farmer's market every Sunday. That's very well-attended, and I think that we'd be willing to give you a table at that farmer's market, too, if you'd like, as another option.
So, I-
Just got a plan. It's okay, you can tell us if you don't think it's a good idea.
Just a suggestion.
So, first of all, I, so this is part of a project for my buttsman's fund. I, I was trying to get, I was trying to get, like, significant improvement by then, because it's in June. And also, there'd be more, I guess, cookie-oriented audience at playgrounds.
I think you have a vast cookie-oriented audience, right?
So, I mean, so Ry, what we'll do is, we're gonna pass a resolution, we're gonna vote on it, and then we can talk about some alternative ideas that you can choose from, if that would be okay. So, may I have a motion authorizing village support to Ry Kessler for her efforts to support the Humane Society?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, Ry, congratulations, the board does support this effort. Thank you for, thank you for bringing your idea forward, and we'll definitely support you, whether it's at the park or somewhere else. Well, we could talk some more about it. Okay? Thanks, Dad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so may I have the Eastchester Irish American Social Club come forward to talk about the St. Patrick's Day Parade?
You have a great agenda. I think it's a great agenda. Good stuff.
Good evening.
Hi.
How's everybody doing?
Wonderful. How are you?
Michael Denny. I'm co-chairman of the Eastchester Irish American Social Club St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee. And this coming Sunday, March 13th, at 3:00 PM, we're gonna have our 16th annual that was kind of delayed for the past two years. St. Patrick's Day Parade starting at the Mac and Conception parking lot, going up Main Street, up Route 22. Our grand marshal, our longest-reigning grand marshal, for three years now it's gonna be, is Tim McGrath of Fred McGrath Funeral Home. And our honoree is here with us tonight as well, Kathy Deegan. She's a club member, who's put a lot of time and effort into our club, and we had an honoree each year, as well as a grand marshal.
Kathy, would you mind coming up with? Yeah, we should, we should honor the honoree.
Thanks very much, Michael. Pleasure to be here tonight and to spread the word about our great parade. I've been a member of the club for 30 years. Not giving away my age, I guess I am, but it's been a wonderful 30 years, and the club has rejuvenated so much over the years. And, you know, we have young families still coming in, we have picnics, we have the Christmas party, where we have Santa come and visit all the kids. And I'm really looking forward to Sunday, and I'd love you all to come out. It looks like it's gonna be maybe a little chillier than today, but no rain, as far as I know. So, anyway, it's a great day. And we have buses at Lake Isle, that people can park there and take the buses down to ICS parking lot, and then, you know, if they want to march or whatever, and, you know, then they can, you know, get their cars when the parade is over at Lake Isle. So, it's a wonderful day.
Great.
Again, glad to be here tonight.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say one thing real quick? The Irish American Club, there's so much good in this town. As a matter of fact, in 2017, I approached the club, let them know that we were raising money for a van here for the Ecap. And you folks asked me, "How much have we raised?" And I told you $16,000, and at that point, you said that you would match it. And you guys, the Irish American Club, the Irish American Club matched the $16,000, and we went and purchased the van that the Ecap uses to this day. So, we want to thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we do have, we do have a public hearing today, so we have a public hearing to consider a proposed local law to allow for apiaries within the village of Tuckahoe. May I have a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed to opening the public hearing? Any abstentions? So, if we have anyone that would like to comment on the local law to allow beehives in Tuckahoe, now is the time to come forward?
Good evening. Tom Ringwall, 6 Hollywood Avenue East. Hello.
Hi.
I support the initiative. It makes total sense. I think about 40% of our food is generated from bees, so I think we should do everything within our power to keep the bee population thriving. They are not aggressive, they are not the yellow jackets. I have personally been stung countless times by yellow jackets, and I've never once been stung by a honeybee. I actually don't even know anybody that's been stung by a honeybee, other than maybe a beekeeper, that was a little too close or whatever. So, there's no downside to this, in my opinion. So, I really hope that you guys pass this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other residents or members that would like to weigh in?
Scooter Scott, 10 Circle Road. And last month, I came out in support of it. I just want to reiterate just how important it is to keep the bee population growing, because, as was pointed out, no bees, no food, we die.
Simple.
Thank you.
Anyone to come after that? Anyone want to oppose that? So, we will leave the public hearing open another month and probably close it next month. Thank you for your input. Adoption of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed to opening the public hearing? Any abstentions? So, if we have anyone that would like to comment on the local law to allow beehives in Tuckahoe, now is the time to come forward?
Good evening. Tom Ringwall, 6 Hollywood Avenue East. Hello.
Hi.
I support the initiative. It makes total sense. I think about 40% of our food is generated from bees, so I think we should do everything within our power to keep the bee population thriving. They are not aggressive, they are not the yellow jackets. I have personally been stung countless times by yellow jackets, and I've never once been stung by a honeybee. I actually don't even know anybody that's been stung by a honeybee, other than maybe a beekeeper, that was a little too close or whatever. So, there's no downside to this, in my opinion. So, I really hope that you guys pass this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other residents or members that would like to weigh in?
Scooter Scott, 10 Circle Road. And last month, I came out in support of it. I just want to reiterate just how important it is to keep the bee population growing, because, as was pointed out, no bees, no food, we die.
Simple.
Thank you.
Anyone to come after that? Anyone want to oppose that? So, we will leave the public hearing open another month and probably close it next month. Thank you for your input. Adoption of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And now's the first opportunity to address the board on agenda items. If there's anyone that has anything on the agenda that you'd like to address. Okay? So, we will move on to resolutions, and we'll move on to resolution number two, authorizing a proposal from LC Consulting for services related to listening and discovery sessions regarding workplace culture. And this came out of suggestions and requests from village employees at different levels, asking for training on teamwork and workplace culture. And I think it's something that is really important. You know, you see that, that kind of training happening in not-for-profits and for-profits. So, we are, I'm asking for a motion authorizing this proposal.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, we'll move on to resolution number three, authorizing engagement for legal services with Jeff Storch of Harris Beach as bond counsel for the village, dated February 15th. And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, we're using the same attorney who has moved to another firm. So, it's the same attorney, but we do need to authorize the legal services with him in the new firm. So, may I have a motion to authorize this engagement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and we did have a number of capital projects that we've closed, so I'm asking for a motion to authorize the closing of the following capital projects for Village Hall and Community Center HVAC AC Improvement, for court upgrades, road resurfacing, and the project numbers are listed there. May I have a motion to approve closing all of these capital projects?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The fifth resolution, authorizing the sale of a surplus for a Dodge Ram to high bidder Shanna Singh of Schenectady in the amount of $2,950. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The fifth resolution, authorizing the sale of a surplus for a Dodge Ram to high bidder Shanna Singh of Schenectady in the amount of $2,950. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. Authorizing, also may I have a motion authorizing the surplus of the 1999 Ford Model Special Service Diesel with ambulance box to be sold to the highest bidder?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And then, we have to pay the bills, so I'm asking for a motion to authorize the approval of vouchers in the amount of $549,059.39.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, let us move on to departmental reports to the board, and I see the chief is here. So, chief, can you give us an update? And thank you for the annual report that you sent out.
Good evening, mayor, members of the board. Just a couple of quick announcements. Hopefully, as we get closer to April 1st- Hopefully, as we get closer to April 1st, we're going to start flipping the signs back for the alternate side of street parking. So just look for that as we get closer to April 1st. We usually, we will definitely issue warning tickets for the first week that the signs are up, so we could get residents acclimated to moving their cars for streets sweeping. And we're looking forward to doing that, and, because that's usually a sign of nice warm weather ahead, so. Just wanna make sure that our residents are aware of that. As you said, mayor, we have released the Police 2021 Annual Report. We will make it public tomorrow, post it on social media, and get it out on swift reach to all our residents, as well as on the website. And just finally, I just wanted to congratulate and wish lots of luck to our retired detective Andrea Pinto. Dee, as we all know, retired on February 26th after 25 years of service. Anyone that's lived in this village, worked in this village, just drove through the village probably at some point or another, met up with Dee. And I'm sure they were left with an impression that this was a person that went out of her way to help our residents and visitors alike. So we wanna wish her the very best of luck, and thank you for her 25 years of service.
Yeah.
Yes, you're here.
Here, here is right. Thank you, chief. Is Frank DiMarco superintendent of DPW on? Okay, no. Do you have, anybody have any questions?
Yeah, mayor, I actually have one question. Hey Frank, how are you, wherever you are? Hope you're at home relaxing. Frank, there was a couple of questions about the trees that were removed down by the northbound side of the Tuckahoe train station. Perhaps you could give us a little insight as maybe to the condition of the trees? And maybe why they were removed, Frank?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, you know, we did extensive work at the Tuckahoe train station. Northbound egress from the train, from the steps that go up to the Lower Oak Street parking lot. We took a lot of the dead limbs and trees that actually looked healthy, but they, there was an abundance of dead trees and limbs that were just falling onto one another. But it gave it the appearance that a lot of those trees were alive. But realistically, 75% of the trees in that whole entire area had to be taken down because they were dangerous. We have also planted a lot of new shrubs and trees, and I suggest that for those that haven't accessed those stairs leading down to the northbound tracks, to take a walk down there, because we did extensive planting that looks absolutely beautiful. So as far as the trees, they all needed to be removed because they were mostly dead, and no one realized that until you got a closer look. But I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, appreciate it, Frank, thank you. We had residents that, you know, looked over and it kinda seemed bare to them, and they brought it to my attention, so thank you for answering that, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Frank? Um, so, go ahead.
I had called Mr. DiMarco about two weeks ago. I'm not here to apologize, I'm here to say thank you. I know we took two of your men from you, and I mentioned it to Frank, and I just wanna say to John Saviano and Robert Federico, we stole them from your department, and they're gonna be new firemen, and I'm sure they're gonna give back just as much beautiful services they gave to the DPW. Frank, I did thank you, and now I'm thanking the board for turning the men over to us.
But you're not saying sorry?
No. I'm not saying I'm sorry because they're gonna be in the town and they're not running away. Both of them start their, their, their services on the 15th of this month. They go to the academy, and they'll be there until the 19th. So thank you again for giving us two wonderful men, and I want the village to know that.
Thank you. Congratulations to them.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, Frank?
The department are gonna be losing two great men, but I'm just hoping that Anthony doesn't call me again to tell me he's taking more of my department. So I am not answering any more of Anthony's phone calls.
No more phone calls. Exactly. Thank you, Frank. To, is Elaine, are you going to do the library report? Okay, Elaine Provenzano?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Congratulations. We will miss them. John is my cousin, actually. So the Tuckahoe Library, we wanna say that the library now, masks are now optional, beginning today. We are also handing out two COVID test kits per person. So come to the library and you can get free COVID test kits to take home with you. And if you need AARP help, Eastchester Public Library is helping this year, and you can call 793-5055. So in addition to our regular recurring programs, we have some special programs. Back in the Bronx, which is an online program, on Sunday, March 13th at 3:00 PM. You can relive the glory days of your childhood through vintage slides, video clips, and interviews. And then next Monday, we have Meet the Author Vera Hiranandani online, all ages 10 and up, Monday, March 14th at 6:30. Vera is a Newberry Honor author, and she'll be discussing her most recent middle-grade novel, How to Find What You're Not Looking For. Followed by, on March 23rd, local author Elizabeth Keener, who will be discussing her book, Good Girls Don't Make History, in honor of Women's History Month. It's a graphic novel about women's history and the right to vote. Then we have Harmeet Goyendee, will be discussing Everything You Want to Know About Bitcoin. I'm going to have to really listen about that one. And he will answer all of your crypto questions, and that's online, Monday, March 28th at 6:30. We have an in-person Kids Craft Shamrock Door Hanger on Monday, March 14th at 4:00 PM for ages 4 to 10. Virtual How to Successfully Navigate College Admissions for ages 14 and up, Wednesday, March 30th at 8:00. Teens In-Person Writing Club for grades 6 to 12, and we're working with the Tuckahoe Schools to provide this. We also have homework help several days a week, and so we have someone that's going to be on site tomorrow. If anybody needs writing help, whether they're doing it for pleasure or they need it for school, she will be there. Author Eileen Moskowitz-Palma, March 8th and 22nd at 4:00 PM. And then finally, we have our Hybrid Adult Book Club, Wednesday, March 30th at 6:30 PM. The Book Woman of Troublesome Creek by Kim Michelle Richardson, copies are at the library. If you'd like to learn about any of the recurring programs, you can go to the library website. And one more thing, the library also has some early learning backpacks that you can take home that have puzzles and different, wonderful learning tools for ages 1 to 8. So you can check that out at the library.
Very cool. Thank you, Elaine.
Elaine, Elaine, just real quick. I had one question from one of the seniors yesterday at Four Union. She asked if the library was still helping people get their, seniors get their taxes done?
So that is Eastchester's handling this year, so they can call the Eastchester Library. And one other thing I wanted to mention, we have free hotspots. I know that I had, Darrell, I had spoken to you and Denise at Ecap. So if you, we have 25 hotspots. If anybody needs to, access to Wi-Fi, portable Wi-Fi, you just come and take it out with your library card. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Elaine. Camille, do you have anything? Gary? David?
Just a couple of items. One thing I did wanna mention is, you know, several months ago, the board did authorize the use of blink charging stations. And it is a project that's been taking a little bit longer than we expected, but there are a lot of logistical and coordination issues happening. We do have them here at Village Hall and DPW, and you'll start to see them in parking lots as soon as this week, where they're going into the Fisher Avenue parking lot to exchange the ones that are currently there, the Lake Avenue parking lot and Main Street. So we're definitely getting several chargers throughout the village, and this is kinda the first step of the public chargers out facing that. So one of the questions is, how am I gonna know that these chargers are here and where are they gonna be? So it's an interesting project that I have some village staff working on here, is new maps of our parking, our parking options, not only for commuters and long-term, long-term commuters, from permits to the parking meters, to the short-term meters, and where people can park, and kind of just promoting our good, safe parking lots to commuters. And knowing where people just kinda go online and go, where can I park if I'm just going out to dinner, and where's the best, you know, place to go? So just trying to put together some really good maps, and also putting on the charging stations on there, so.
We need an app.
Well, one step at a time, right? So that's just an interesting project, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll kinda be rolling that out. Second is, is that it is budget season, we are deep into budget right now, a lot of discussions, a lot of things going on. But just wanna make everyone aware that the budgets will be filed, or is it due, March 20th? That is a Sunday, so it would be most likely on Monday, not the preceding Friday. Just wanna let everyone know, there are two public work sessions on the 26th, March 26th, and then another one on April 16th. These are both Saturdays starting at 8:30, the public is welcome. Right now, we have them tentatively here at Village Hall, but that can change if there's a lot of people that wanna show up. We could probably do it at the community center, but we can discuss that. But it is a, they are public meetings, if anyone wants to come talk about the budget, anything in regards to that. There'll be a schedule of which departments will be there that day, but obviously, they can talk about anything. So that's the budget that's coming out soon. And then just real quick, I did wanna say to John Saviano and Rob Federico, it's sorry to lose you, they're really, two really exceptional young men down at DPW, but they're going on to, you know, a great organization, wish them the best.
Yeah, congratulations to them. Okay, the next village board meeting is on April 7th at 7:00 PM, so mark your calendars. And we move on to Board Trustee Member Reports, trustee Lang?
Thank you, mayor. Okay, so first, I have, I reached out to a gentleman named Chris Polin. He is from Silver Street Development, the new owners of 100 Columbus. I just, you know, mentioned a couple of my concerns to him, and he was, he was a really, really nice guy. He returned my call within minutes. He informed me that the new heating system is up and running, they're currently working out a few kinks. I asked that the seniors and elderly be directly contacted when, perhaps if any water plumbing systems have been worked on. And I asked it, again, that the seniors and elderly be directly contacted when the water would be out, instead of taping a flyer to the elevator, because some of those seniors and older folks don't get to the elevator for maybe days or even weeks. So he mentioned to me that he would keep the elderly and the seniors a priority, and he would directly contact them if and when they had to work on the water. So it was a wonderful conversation. He's happy to be in here in Tuckahoe, and he gave me an open line, if there's any questions, public can reach out to me, and I could easily call him. And he'll get back to me just as quick as he did last time, so thank you to Chris. Next, I reached out to a local mom from the Chapel School who started a medical supply drive for the Ukraine. So we asked for a bin right here in Village Hall and Town Hall in Eastchester as well. So if you can donate, that'd be wonderful, because, you know, we all see what's going on over there. And it's mainly, it's bandages, gauze pads, first aid kits, scissors, stuff like that, you know? So whatever we can do would be greatly appreciated, I'm sure. What else, yeah? Beautification is now on Facebook, they're happy about that, and they're soon gonna be taking electronic donations, so they're real happy about that. But that's all I have, mayor, thank you very much.
Trustee, I was gonna go to trustee Cronin, you see how I'm finishing up too quickly? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. It's been a little bit of a slow month on zoning and planning. This month's zoning board meeting is scheduled for 7:30, March 9th, with the working meeting the hour preceding it. There's only one new agenda item, and that's for an area variance at 10 Hollywood East for an addition to the existing house on that lot. The meeting will be both in-person and viewable over Zoom. The next planning board meeting is on March 15th and contains two items. The site plan to renovate the soccer fields at Iona are still on the agenda, that's 200 White Plains Road. And there'll be a new site plan reviewed for the creation of offices at space at 9 Jackson Avenue. That meeting will be on Zoom only. Wanted to thank the individuals, Zakena Smith, who is here, and Andy Wren for volunteering for the assessment board. It's a very important job, and I really appreciate them stepping forward. Eastchester schools, we are around kindergarten registration time, so for children who turn five by December 1st, 2022, it's now time to register those kids for kindergarten. The Student Government Rock Against Cancer will be held this March 11th at the High School Auditorium, and features talents of both students and teachers. Tickets can be purchased by students at the lunch periods for $5. I am very sorry to report that Dr. Rob Glass, the current superintendent, has resigned from his position, so he'll be finishing up at the end of the year. If you remember, when he first took his position at Eastchester School District, he came to a board meeting and introduced himself, something that was never done by any school superintendent before. So he's been a good partner, a good communicator with the village throughout his time here, and I just wanna thank him for that. A new search for the new superintendent will commence soon. And so with this current situation, that'll make the school board election even more critical than it always is. They, we did vote on the school district for a rather large bond to improve infrastructure in the school of all the buildings, and introduce some safety features into the building. So now we are going to have to look for a superintendent who can carry out that large project. So the district will be presenting its regular budget in April, and the budget vote and trustee election will be held May 17th. Anyone who's interested in running for school board, you have to pick up a petition and file it with somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 signatures by April 18th. And that petition form can be picked up at the district school office from the district clerk. Some other community events that are of interest are this Saturday, the annual Giuseppe Garibaldi Lodge 2583, that's our local lodge, will hold its annual carnival on March 12th, which is used to raise funds for scholarships for both high school students from Tuckahoe and Eastchester. I think last year, they awarded somewhere like 12 or 14 scholarships. So it's a very nice thing that this organization does. Tickets can be purchased at their website, and today is the last day to do so, so you're gonna wanna rush home and do that. In addition to the information our senator, state senator brought us this evening, Shelley Mayer will be hosting an information session on Understanding Your Energy Bill, of which there's been a lot of talk about in the news lately. This'll be held on March 16th by Zoom from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. You can go to her website and register for that event. Westchester Park Foundation is sponsoring a Bronx River Blitz cleanup, so Mr. Dardano, I'm sure you're on that, March 19th. And information can be accessed off their webpage. I just wanted to make a comment, so it was nice that Danny mentioned Chris Polin, just to let him know, because I think, you know, we've talked about some of this stuff at our working meetings, and he hasn't been able to attend them. So we have worked with Chris Polin. Chris, Mr. Polin has a system where the building management, because there are people on staff there all day, there's a whole system of phone numbers that they can, individuals can reach out to for whatever their needs be. So they don't really require, you know, somebody from the board to intervene with them, they do have direct contact with the office management there. So I just wanted to let you know that. In addition, trustee Cronin has been helping them set up a tenants' association, which will be, again, very important for that building to be able to advocate. association, which will be again, very important for that building to be able to advocate, uh, on their behalf with, um, uh, that structure. And Mr. Pullen is also very, uh, supportive of that effort. So, I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, the residents at Columbus, uh, 100 Columbus have that. Uh, it's the end of the year, uh, from the village, uh, perspective. As you all know, we have a, an election on March 15th. So, uh, I just wanted to, to thank the two new trustees that have served on this board for the past year. Uh, they have added just an immense amount, um, to what we were able to accomplish, what we heard the mayor report on, uh, at our January meeting. And I just wanted to thank them for, for Daryl for bringing the ECAP board forward and, um, you know, being such a good communicator about the community center. He is, been at every single event to help, um, and, and provided a lot of really good advice on, uh, interacting with the community and effective ways to do that. And in, in the same kind of stride, Kara Cronin has been just an amazing, uh, community, um, uh, coordinator and, and bringing people together at a, a couple of really great events. So, I just wanted to thank her for that. And as Danny mentioned, uh, trustee Lang, uh, now the beautification committee is online and, and even though nothing was said, I will tell you that was through the efforts of Kara Cronin. She went in, she set up their whole presence, uh, online on Facebook and, um, made it, uh, possible for them to accept donations online. So, I just wanted to thank her for that. And, um, that's it. Thanks.
Trustee Taylor?
The Tuckahoe Community Center. The village board would like to congratulate Adrian Michelle and the Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee on their Black History Month programs held at the Tuckahoe Community Center last month. The first was the movie night. The second was the gene, genealogy workshop and then the third was a cook-off. I would like to say hats off to all of the chefs who volunteered to cook. The food was excellent. We had a great time. On Saturday, April 16th at 11:00 AM, Mayor Andino and the village board will continue the annual tradit- tradition of having a Easter egg hunt for children ages one to nine, starting at 11:00 AM at the Parkway Oval Field. This is always a fun event, not just for the kids, but also for the parents. And the General So Pope Foundation will be donating the eggs for this event. Uh, life screening is back at the Tuckahoe Community Center on April 20th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. To sign up for your health assessment screening, you can go to www.lifelinescreening.com/ or call 1-800-679-5608. The East Chester Community Action Partnership. For Black History Month, the children from the ECAP after-school program celebrated Black History Month by researching influential black figures throughout history and making a wonderful video presentation. It was a job well done, well done by all the kids who participated. They did an excellent job. ECAP has English as a second language classes, it's starting April 4th. You can call East Chester to register. They have nurses on site every Wednesday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The senior social group is every Tuesday at 11:00 AM and Director Denise Chin asked me to mention that they're having spring cleaning supplies along with their regular food distribution on March 16th. And she said, please make sure to provide income documentation to participate in the spring cleaning supplies distribution. Okay. Uh, we had, um, two people pass away, longtime members in the village of Tuckahoe and I would just like to give our condolences to the Norman family. Um, Henry Norman III, affectionately known as Chip, um, passed away recently. Um, Chip was the oldest of five kids. Uh, he was well-known in the community for his car playing, but also the fishing trips to Massachusetts that him and old Dean Mangum had done for many, many years. And lastly, Chip's father, Henry Norman, was the first black police chief of the village of Tuckahoe. The second was Myra Mae Hampton. Myra Mae Hampton was 73 years old. She passed away on February 12th. She grew up in Tuckahoe, New York, where she was a staple in the community known to, to greet everyone with a hearty what's up. And she was always concerned about anyone in the community who was ill or had a loss. She loved to send cards to lift spirits. Although she was born developmentally disabled, she remained empathetic, worked a job and was a pastor child for IBM's daycare center in a tri-state area. She adored her hometown of Tuckahoe community and the community loved her back. Once again, like to congratulate the Tuckahoe Girls varsity basketball team on their section one championship. And congratulations to Detective Dee Pinto for her newly retirement, 25 years' service to the village. And also to John Saviano and Robert Federico to their new appointment to the East Chester Fire Department. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Cronin?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Uh, I'll start with the TESC report. The Tuckahoe Environmental Sustainability Committee would like to say congratulations to their junior member, Maria Caposo, who has won, um, the Citizen Science Award. Um, there is another riverkeeper besides the one that trustee, uh, the deputy mayor Howell mentioned. This one is the big riverkeeper sweep and that is on May 7th, 2022. Um, you can still sign up, uh, to have a tree planted at your home. So, the, the DPW will plant a tree in front of your home if you would like one, or even up to 15 feet from the curb on your property. Please find the information regarding this on the TESC website. You can, there's a registration form and you can send it in and they'll come and assess if you, if your space is eligible for a tree. Um, from the Tuckahoe seniors, they had their Valentine's Day pizza lunch on February 15th. Um, I want to thank the two Girl Scout troops who brought Valentine's treats and gifts to the seniors, um, and who are supporting our seniors. So, thank you to both, both troops, both the Cottle troop and one of the East Chester troops, um, for, for loving our seniors like that. Um, they're having, the seniors are having their St. Patrick's Day lunch on Tuesday, March 15th at noon. I believe it's corned beef and cabbage. Um, there's a monthly member meeting that takes place on March 10th at 12. Uh, this is an earlier time than usual. And then a board meeting on March 10th at 10:30. From the Tuckahoe schools, um, the Tuckahoe schools was represented by Lexi Parsons, Sophia Jackman and Victoria Ricotta on March 5th at the New York, uh, Debate League Tournament. And they were fourth overall against a total of 12 teams. This is a very big accomplishment. Um, yeah. And they, the debate team, the middle school debate team came in third overall in speaker points and Sophia Jackman was given the honor of third overall for the day. So, congratulations to the Jackman family and all, all of the members of the middle school debate team. Um, parent teacher conferences will be at the end of the month on March 31st and April 1st. These can be done either via Zoom, by phone, or in person. And there is a superintendent's conference day next Friday. Schools will be closed. Uh, just like East Chester Public Schools, Tuckahoe, uh, School District is recruiting kindergarteners for the class of 2034, 2034. Can you imagine? Um, and so, if you have a child who will be turning, uh, five by December 1st, please reach out to Karen Barrows at 914-337-6600 or email her with any questions. There is a musical production of Into the Woods, uh, set for March 10th, 11th and 12th at 7:30 and then a, um, matinee on Saturday, March 12th at 2:00 PM. Um, so you can buy tickets online on the website. Again, congratulations to the girls' basketball team. And there is a PTA general meeting tomorrow, March 8th. Um, if you do live at Marble Hall 100 Columbus Avenue, the tenants' association that trustee Howell mentioned will be Mon- uh, Wednesday, March 9th at the community center. Uh, this will be an inauguration meeting. So, you, there is, um, if there's any interest in participating in the executive board of the tenants' association, please email your interest, uh, your name and phone number and contact information to marblehall100@gmail.com. Uh, trustee Taylor mentioned the Juneteenth, uh, program and I would just like to personally thank the Juneteenth Committee, uh, led by Adrian Michelle, Cassie Savage, Stephanie Palmer, Chanel Moore and Alicia Compass. They did tremendous work, um, and we, we really thank them for stepping up and taking a leadership role in the community. Uh, I wanted to say welcome to the two new businesses that I had the pleasure of performing the ribbon cutting ceremony for last month. Lotus Thread on Elm Street, this is a couture dress store and Prana Yoga on Main Street, right across the street from us right now. Uh, these are two of the 14 new businesses that have opened this year in the village and I understand that number 15 is on its way. Uh, Tip and Toe, which is also across the street at 62 Main Street, which is, uh, nails and, um, you know, nail place. Uh, they are set to open hopefully next week. So, we welcome all of these new businesses and please remember to continue to shop local. And I will end by saying finally, oh, two things. Um, in addition to the, I, I'd like to also extend my, my condolences to the Hampton and the, the Norman family. We also lost another long-term, uh, longtime resident here last month named Donald Brundage. Donald, yeah, Donald passed away, uh, last month and we extend a, um, condolences to his family, to the whole Brundage family. And finally, I would like to end by saying, uh, congratulations and happy retirement to Detective Dee Pinto. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. It's great to have such a, an engaged board. I get to check things off my list. I don't have to go over because it's covered. Um, so I really have, um, three, three major, um, announcements. The first one is, uh, I got a couple of emails from, um, residents asking about the mask mandates in, at Village Hall as well as, and the village departments. And I just want to let you all know that masks are now optional. If you choose to wear them, we're still going to have them available if you need them, um, at the front, uh, desk, but they are now, uh, the mask mandate is lifted as it has been for New York State. Also, wanted to inform you guys some bad news. Um, VFW post AC Jeffries on 40 Midland Place is at risk for closing, uh, not due to lack of money, but due to lack of membership. So, we are, we're going to need some help over there, um, Anthony, with helping, uh, the, the VFW posts get more members. Um, the, I'm trying to find here what the... So, you have to have a campaign ribbon during a period of conflict, which means during war, war period, and, um, you don't have to live in the village. So, that's important for people to know. Um, you can live elsewhere. It's, um, I want to thank, uh, trustee Cronin for putting out a press release and getting some news coverage to come and tell this story. And I just want to alert everyone so that way if you know veterans who might need a post to attend and to become a member of, that, uh, VFW post AC Jeffries is available to them. The commander there is Reverend Stowe and we have been in, you know, communication. And the first thing I thought is, is it because of money? And he said, no, it's not money, it's membership. So, we need to keep that in mind and, and help our VFW here in Tuckahoe. I also wanted to let everyone know that the Tuckahoe, um, Historic Preservation Commission is having its first meeting on Thursday, March 10th. And they will have the ward house application before them and they'll set the public hearing. Um, so that's exciting news. It will be here and publicized, right? I mean televised, right? Yep. So, that's exciting news. I will be here to watch that historic moment. Um, and also I wanted to, uh, let everyone know that I've, I was, um, asked to meet with Sue Siamara and Betty O'Loughlin of the Beautification Committee and, uh, trustee Lang mentioned, um, the, the, the committee's efforts to try to increase fundraising. Uh, they, they contacted me to ask to meet with me to talk about how they can increase membership, um, of the committee, volunteers, and also to find new ways to drum up donations. So, um, Danny, it's only because you're not on social media that you, you, I didn't ask you to do it. So, I, I, I said, Kara, can you help them set up social media? And, you know, and she did. So, I think now the first step is to get Facebook going and to have somebody manage that. So, we're looking for, uh, high school volunteers that could help manage the social media account, um, post pictures when they have projects going, and then also to begin to collect donations, um, through PayPal or Venmo or, or such. So, I, I really want for the community to rally around the beautification committee. You see all the wonderful work that they do and how beautiful our village looks throughout the year and the different seasons. So, yes. So, if you have some extra time and you can, um, give your time and your, your talents and your efforts to the beautification committee, um, please contact, actually contact me at, um, my email address, we're at Village Hall and I will connect you, um, to either Sue or to Betty, who are now leading the charge there. Um, and I think that is it. I also want to thank the Juneteenth Committee for their events that they've, um, put on and congratulate the new businesses, Lotus Threads and Prana. Um, we have just so many businesses, just people are coming in. Um, I had a really interesting meeting with one of the landlords who is looking to ask what kinds of businesses are people in Tuckahoe looking for? And I think that's all part of our, you know, master plan discussion. And so, we are moving closer to developing that committee. And if you're interested, we are going to be sending out an email probably in the next couple of days, um, to inform you as to how you can get involved. Even if you're not on the actual master plan committee, there are going to be a lot of opportunities for people to contribute, um, and give, and weigh in on what the future of Tuckahoe should look like. So, that's exciting news. And, um, I think that's it for me. I will allow a second opportunity to address the board on any agenda items or none.
Hi, I'm sorry. I just, um, Danny, I had sent you the history report. I don't know if you received it. So, just wanted to mention the history committee. I'm co-chair of the history committee. Um, and so, uh, we are, you can follow us on Facebook. We almost doubled our reach to 3,500 people in February.
Wow.
10 of our 11 posts were for Black History Month, including Andrew and Anna Johnson, Joe Yancy, Henry Norman, Dr. Walters, Mayor Andino. Um, we also posted about Washington's birthday, on Washington's birthday, it was marked with a post about the discovery of bones of revolutionary soldiers at the bottom of Winter Hill in 1923. So, we posted on that anniversary. And I wanted to mention that on Wednesday, March 16th at 1:00 PM, the veterans will conduct a wreath laying ceremony at the Crawford Monument on Winter Hill Road to commemorate the 245th anniversary of the mortal wounding of Revolutionary War hero Samuel Crawford. Spectators may park on Winter Hill Road or side streets and observe from the corner of Immaculate Conception Church and Route 22. There's no parking in the ICC lot due to school, but the event is being coordinated by the Friends of the Ward House and will be filmed to share at a later date. The history committee meets on Wednesdays from 9:30 to 12 at the Village Hall and contact information is available on the village website. And I hope that when you all leave tonight, I don't know if you notice, all of the history that's, the binders that are in the, um, the hutch is out there. So, take a look. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just mention, Elaine, that, um, that, that coverage for Black History Month was amazing. And at the Juneteenth, um, cook-off, uh, it was fun to be able to sit down and show people, you know, that their family history had been brought up. So, people were very appreciative of that. Um, it was really very special, really an excellent job.
Mm-hmm. Nice. Anyone else? Oh. Hi.
I was here last month and I had spoken about whether or not we had to give our name and address. So, I wanted to provide the documentation. I didn't have it with me last time. But secondarily, I want to say to you sincerely, sitting here in and hearing how you care so much about the, the senior citizens and, and addressing, you know, above and beyond, and the love and compassion for people that passed. It makes me very happy to be part of Tuckahoe. I love this village and I'm very proud of our village and thank you very much for making this a wonderful experience.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, Anthony? Yes, Anthony?
Mayor, I'll address this to you, that Trustee Taylor. The only way we could get some help in the VFW down there, we have to get the younger troops, the Afghanistan troops, the Iraqi troops to join. I can't join because I'm already a member and I'm a lifetime member. So, I could come there, just providing I show my card. I wish I could help you out by joining, push your numbers up. But that's the only thing I could tell you. We, if anyone has relatives of past services of Korea, Vietnam, I know we're not going to get any World War II guys, they're pretty much old, and some of them are gone by now. But that's the only way you're going to boost up your VFW, by getting the younger troops here. Where are they? I don't know. If you could put out a flyer, ask them to join, it's a worthy organization. I've been a member of the VFW since February of 1972. I'm there 50 years now. In fact, we were going to have a little party in early this year, but there was a couple other members also with that amount of years, but doing the COVID was here, so we're going to have it sometime this year. But you have to push for that and ask friends, relatives. You don't have to live in the community to belong to VFW. You could belong in Chicago if you want, in Florida if you want, providing you got your card, you could go in any VFW, as long as you're in good standing. So, if I know of anybody, I'd be glad to send them down your way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Real quick, Vito Pinto and Josh Gassion is helping us work on this.
I know even Bob Forst had mentioned it to me this morning also.
Along with Reverend Stowe.
Right.
So, we are working on helping them to see if they can get more members. Appreciate it.
Put it out to the older fellows. I know you're not going to get older fellows, but if they have nephews, cousins, friends, just ask them to come down there and show them what you got. Put a pool table there, let, attract them in there, you know? Have a barbecue or something like that to bring them in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
I say something, Mayor?
Let's, let me. In response to that, can you hold on one second, Mike?
I just wanted to say thank you to Adrian Michelle, who has done tremendous work in getting News 12 here to interview Reverend Stowe about the VFW.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Dardano, 62 Chestnut Street, Tuckahoe. So, two things. One, about the May 7th cleanup. What we're going to do this year a little bit differently is we're going to try to do, last year we did the cleanup in the river, and we also tried to do some street cleanup, which Kara helped me with. But I want to try to do some preliminary street stuff in April with some kids. I'm working with the high school kids. Danny, I'm an outreach to you, because your kids are always awesome about this. So, just for an hour or so, just to do some street picking up, just to sort of raise some awareness about this, trash on the street goes into the river. So, that's a little bit different than what we normally do. And this year, Erin's getting, Erin getting married that day? Erin's getting married that day, right? So, close to that. So, I'm going to be handling it with my wife, Susan, she volunteered, so. And Erin's going to be married in Hawaii, wherever she's going, right? A second thing is, on March 21st, we're going to have our Eastchester-Tuckahoe monthly meeting for the chamber at Prana. So, I invite everyone, Democrat, Republican, independent, whatever, please come. Don't, you know, supporting business is not just a campaign slogan, it's something we do all the time. So, I'd love to see everybody there. And we did go to the opening, and it's a wonderful place. Yoga Haven was there, but they've done a really great job with it. So, it also got tremendous social media push because they have a lot, they have a big fan base at Prana. I'm a shock. So, anyways, those two things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Engelbert. I'm at 117 Bella Vista. Mayor Andino, the trustees. I just wanted to comment on village administrator David Burke's comments about this being budget season. I'm a bit of a budget kind of nerd myself, at the whole fiscal representation of organizational priorities and such. And, you know, I live in Excel, so I think it's pretty cool to kind of begin with out of the gate. But I did want to comment that I don't, I don't envy what the challenge that you all on the board kind of have set, set before you this year. I mean, rampant inflation means that even a flat budget is going to precipitate or necessitate some pretty painful cuts to essential services. I mean, that's, that's the heart and above why corporate leaders and small business owners and banks and families, really, everyone hates inflation so much, why it's so insidious, you get less for the same or even more. I mean, who likes that? But increasing residential taxes, kind of beyond the tax cap, is, is not, not a tool for navigating inflation or avoiding these painful service cuts. It's an, it's old-fashioned kind of legacy, legacy thinking from Tuckahoe's past. And residents, including, including myself, have made it crystal clear that it's kind of, the well on residential taxes has run, run dry. So, what does that mean? What am I kind of saying, saying here is that kind of no business has cut its way to growth or improve services. So, instead, I'm imploring the board that we need to double down on the great programs you've all implemented kind of in the last year, kind of including generating revenue from the filming industry, from commercial growth, from the 14, soon 15 new businesses, from participating in the block, block grants, from the public-private partnerships kind of we've seen. We desperately need you to continue diversifying the revenue sources that support the village of Tuckahoe. So, as a, as a village resident, I ask the board not to make, as you go into this budgeting season, not to make any knee-jerk, old-fashioned kind of type responses to a difficult and a financial situation, austerity measures essentially. The village has seen in the past and what happens when we cut essential services. It solves the short-term budget pain, to be sure, but it creates longer-term problems that are far more expensive to fix. I'm asking you to kind of run the village, almost like, like a business, and kind of continue to strive and seek to diversify our revenue sources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the board? So, I just have two last things. I want to wish everyone a happy Women's History Month. It is Women's History Month, huh? The women have forgotten that. And also, just to remind everyone that there is a village election on March 15th. You can vote at the community center between 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. And we shall see you next month. Have a good night, Tuckahoe.
Good night.
Good night.